Folks, we're on the air, so I want to welcome all of you this evening and welcome to our Albany City Council meeting. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call, please.
Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellen.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay, and first that we have this evening on our agenda is establishing a sister city relationship with the municipality of Santa Maria, Huatuco, right? Huatuco, yes. It's a hard one, in Mexico. And with us this evening, we have some of our healthcare professionals. And we have Dr. Weinstein and Dr. Olet that brought this item forward to want to see if the council was interested in joining in to be a sister city. And so, Dr. Weinstein and Dr. Olet, would you like to come forward? Okay, thank you.
Hello. So, I think some of you may know who I am. I've been an internist and a nephrologist for the past 38 years here in Albany. And my partner, Dr. Olet, has been a family practitioner for many years in Corvallis. And I was fortunate to lure her to Samaritan in Albany. We...
Dr. Weinstein, can you get a little bit closer to the mic?
Is this the mic?
Yeah. Or do we have a handheld for him? Yes, this would be, I think this will make it easier. Thank you.
So, over the past 10 years, we've been vacationing in Huatuco, first kind of as tourists. And as we got to know the community, began to understand some of the needs of this area, we let them know that as physicians, we enjoy volunteering at InReach. And Laura's been to Haiti and other places. And so, we became introduced to the president of the Red Cross of Huatuco. And this led to a series of meetings. And, you know, over the years, we have met with the mayor and the officials of the state of Oaxaca. We came and talked to Mayor Canopa about the sister city relationship. I think many of you may know Patty, who is the associate director of development for our medical school. And we met with her and talked about the possibility of medical students rotating in Huatuco and working in a free medical clinic. I've since met with the head of the residency program, with Dr. Larry Mullins, who has encouraged me and said he would be very supportive. And this has kind of all evolved into a bigger relationship that we considered and culminated in meeting with the president of the municipality of Huatuco, who presented us with a letter asking if we would have a sister city relationship. So, let me start by just showing you where is Huatuco. And it's a little hard to see. It's in the far south, on the Pacific side. The Bahias de Huatuco is the Bay of Huatuco. It's near Oaxaca. And it's really a series, it's more like a county. They don't have city government like we do. They have a municipality, which is more like a county government. And the cities are all part of this. And the head of this is the president of the municipality, which is Dario Pacheco. And there's a letter in your packet from him to Mayor Canopa. So, what is Sister City International? It was founded by President Eisenhower. It's an organization where American cities or other counties or states have relationships with foreign cities. It's a partnership, and it can be really whatever the citizens make it to be. And so, right off the bat, I want to express the fact that we're not here asking for any funding at all. This is really between the citizens of Albany and the citizens of Huatuco. We're actually funding this program. We're just looking for some recognition from the city. It's not particularly an expensive program, and it's really run by volunteers in the city. There are similar programs in other cities in Oregon. So, what's special about Huatuco? Well, it's location, it's at the coast, it's a beautiful place. But any place that you want to volunteer in, or you want to send medical students or doctors to, you really have a number of requirements. You really have to have a way to get there. They have a wonderful airport, they have beautiful roads. It's very safe. We've been there eight times in the last 10 years or so. We always ask the questions, you know, why don't you have some of the problems that you have in the rest of Mexico? And the answer has always been that they don't allow that, that they know that, you know, the business in Huatuco is in large part is tourism. And tourism does not thrive where there's crime or where people don't feel safe. And we would ride with our bicycles through small villages that had no roads. We felt very safe wherever we went. And I don't think we ever had an incident in all the years we've been down there. So, we really would vouch for the safety of it. The municipal government has really been very interested in doing anything that would help the people, particularly in the healthcare area. The environment, I would describe it as pristine. Why is that? It's because of an agency in Mexico called Fonatur. Fonatur sets up tourist areas like Cancun. And they haven't always done such a great job. I think they've learned from their mistakes. And in Huatuco, what you find is that the people are pretty much in towns, in the cities. There are tourist areas at the coast. And everything else is kind of like a park. I mean, they just, they have preserved everything beautifully. So, they have some wonderful national parks here, the beaches are beautiful. And it's really for the benefit of the people, but it also helps obviously encourage the tourists who come to Huatuco. The people are friendly. I mean, they're some of the friendliest people I've ever run into. And they really do care about each other, which really struck us. And they have something that you have to have, which is a viable economy. It's very difficult to volunteer or work or deal with an area which has crushing poverty. And in those areas like that, the things that you want to do for them are kind of irrelevant because, you know, there are such issues with the economy that nothing else really matters. They do have a viable economy with tourism, fishing, and the coffee industry, but they don't have everything. But this is a picture just of the various, so there are mountains, there are hills, there's a beautiful coastline. All of that in between is part of Huatuco. Certainly, this is La Cruzasita, which is the main town. We like to hang out here. It's a little square where all the people come. They have restaurants, there's a beautiful church on one side. The coast, oops, guess I can't do that. Well, we missed it. But this is where we like to stay. This is the Camino Real. Surprisingly inexpensive, beautiful beaches. If you're just coming as a tourist, you know, it's incredibly affordable and a wonderful place to visit. But, I'm not sure I'm going to get this to go forward. Help? All right, what did I, what's his next? Okay, what does Huatuco lack? Well, they lack a comprehensive and advanced medical care. What we learned when we were in Huatuco from friends and people we met is, as an example, if you have renal failure and you live in Huatuco, if you don't get out of Huatuco, you will die. There just is no nephrology. There is, you know, I'm the medical director of the dialysis unit. They don't have dialysis in Huatuco. So, there are a lot of things that if you have certain diseases, certain problems, if you don't leave the area, you know, you're really in trouble. They don't have the rural schools. They have teachers, but they don't have schools, they don't have books. And unfortunately, I can't show you the program that we have looked at that's involved in helping with that need. And they really don't have the adequate resources to meet a lot of the basic needs of the citizens. This is Geraldo Pacheco. He's the president of the Red Cross. We met with him. He wanted us to set up a clinic in his Red Cross. They go out and provide the ambulance service for people. And this is the number of volunteers they have to help run it. So, there's a lot of volunteerism in Huatuco, which is really exciting to see. Opportunities, not obligations. So, in a sister city relationship, you can have a sister city relationship and nothing can happen. I mean, if the people don't get involved, if people don't volunteer, it's just something that's said. But there are, the opportunities are for medical outreach. We met with Patty and her group from the medical school. They have a real interest in providing an opportunity for medical students. I've met with the residency program. The residents would like the opportunity to go to Mexico and volunteer. There's the opportunity for cultural exchanges, student exchanges, immersion programs. There are a number of volunteer groups. But Laura can tell you a little bit about...
I've heard that they have local Rotary, or people, they had an active Rotary group there, so I joined Rotary here. And I found to be our local Rotary group to be a wonderful experience also. The Suena El Zapateco means dreams of the indigenous people, that they're involved in establishing the rural schools and looking at helping with medical outreach to the rural areas as well. So, we look at collaborating with some existing efforts that are going on now.
Come on. Help me. Ma has to do with, I have to have my technical advice. So, this is, maybe you could tell the story about little David.
I think we're going on a bit long. But in any case, his mother had some kind of a paralytic disability, and that we were going on an excursion and they were there. And I was looking at my translation dictionary, and she was curious, that she was amazed to think that she could have something like this and learn some English. So, again, that the resources are so minimal and there's so much that we could give. We brought her on tech support.
So, and this is just sort of the evening. Questions for us? Anybody?
Questions? Council, have any questions on it? I know you, I think you did have some more items, or there was more in the packet, or maybe you did get it all.
So, there's a letter from the president of the municipality in Spanish, and then we translated it if you don't read Spanish.
Yeah. And so, in the resolution that's before you, council, there's, it is written up that this was going to be self-supported by the healthcare community. And because I know that's kind of one concern, is more sort of a relationship with sister cities. We've had that request over the years. And there's always some cost associated with that. And how we know we're always, you know, kind of everybody's stretched sort of thin when it comes to, you know, funding certain programs. That's where, you know, Dr. Weinstein and all that came through and said, no, this was going to be self-supported by the healthcare community. But, and that is in the resolution on that. But, so, questions? No? Okay. Thank you. So, council, do you have questions over this resolution? Are you wanting to take action on it, or did you need more questions?
Do you approve of the resolution to establish a sister city relationship with Huatuco? Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. That's unanimous. So, you're now joined, and thank you so much. Yeah.
I trust they've already accepted us.
Oh, yeah.
It is a two-way street.
That's in the letter.
If you read the letter, there's a letter from the president.
I just got that.
And that's what it says.
Let's be a personal tour guide. Let me come over.
They did invite the mayor to come and meet with them. And we would love to take a group of interested people back to Huatuco. I mean, it's a beautiful place.
Yeah.
And we know, we know how to go there and what to do, so.
Well, and I know we are all very grateful for you going down there and be able to help, you know, the folks and with their healthcare and be able to really bring the knowledge that you have had your whole career and be able to bring that to that community is worth a lot. It's a big wealth to them, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that so much. Okay. Thank you. Is there anything? Okay. All right. Okay, next, council. Before we have, the next on the agenda will be the communication. This is over the Lowe's request. So, we did have a request that somebody would like to speak on this item, and which business from the public is after. So, get that one's canceled. Yeah. I think if you don't have the updated agenda, the item number A was canceled. That's delayed for two weeks. So, with that, I will ask if anybody wanted to come forward and speak about the Lowe's request. And I think Larry, you wanted to?
So, item C is now moving up to the top, then? Business from the public, or is it just regarding the Lowe's?
Yeah, this is only on Lowe's. We'll have, we have another item for business from the public, but that'll be after.
My name is Larry Tomlin. I'm L-I-N. I live at 1139 Southwest Morse Lane in Albany. And I feel a little out of place because I haven't heard what they're going to say. But at issue, according to the newspapers, whether or not Albany stands fast or puts off or reduce or eliminate the contractual penalty agreed to by Lowe's regarding their agreement to open a store submitted to the city at Oak and Ninth. I know that from years in business and construction, that contracts are very serious matters. I have several points to back my position that the city should hold them to the contracts Lowe's have vigorously negotiated. The city of Albany upheld our conditions to the tune of, depends on which day that you read in the newspaper, $4 to $5 million, causing disruption of traffic and business to several of our longtime business people. I believe that we would be setting a precedent that could be used in court, Jim Delaporkin's confirm or deny this, against the city in any contract that has a penalty clause unless there's some sort of exacerbating circumstances, not just I'd kind of like to put it off. We would be walking away from the $2 million penalty that they were going to owe us, which, for not making a good faith effort to even start the construction of the building. They're the 43rd largest company in the United States, according to Wall Street Journal, with revenues of $53.42 billion. Last year, they only had a 5.7% increase in sales. And for the four years previously, they, their sales were up too, according to the Wall Street Journal. Marshals and big lots are investing in Albany, and they didn't need us to pony up several million dollars. I think Albany is business-friendly. I don't think a negative decision on this would paint the city as negative to, towards business. And you can ask Chamber of Commerce and people in town. I think it's going to hurt existing local businesses, paint stores, carpet stores. So, I'm not a big fan of it anyway. I think it would even reduce Home Depot's employment. So, all their, they're not all going to be positive jobs. It's not like a manufacturing facility. So, that's my horn, I've tutored it. So, do you have any questions?
Counsel, Larry?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about the Lowe's agenda item?
What do you mean, other than Mr. Stoner?
Other than Mr. Stoner, yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you. So, with that on this item, I think Mr. Stoner, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Mark Stoner. That's S-T-O-N-E-R. I'm director of real estate for the western region for Lowe's Home Improvement. I reside at 28372 Camino La Ronda in San Juan Capistrano, Southern California. Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate the time. I'd first like to acknowledge that Lowe's recognizes that the city lived up to all of its obligations under our contract. The city staff was excellent to work with. They were always very cooperative, and they worked very closely with Lowe's in developing a project that worked for both us and the city. Even over the last year, while this project sat in limbo as to whether we would build or not, the city staff was very cooperative with us, and we truly appreciate that. We recognize that you made a very significant investment in the infrastructure of several million dollars, and that Lowe's basically failed to live up to its obligations. As I'm sure you can imagine today, that we will not be able to open a store by December 31st of this year, or else we'd be well under construction by now. So, we appreciate that. And it's hard sitting here knowing that you did everything you were supposed to and we didn't, but I'm here. To give you a little bit of background, shortly after we closed on this store, we effectively stopped building stores. The economy had hit, hit the majority of our stores very hard. Our sales dropped significantly, and we effectively just stopped building stores and did some significant downsizing from a corporate level. Only recently have we begun building stores again, but during our peak, we were building 125 to 140 stores domestically. This year, we'll build 12. Consequently, what happened is we built up a very significant backlog of sites that we own, that either we had to make long-term decisions on whether we would build stores on these sites or sell them. And during that period of time, the Albany site was in limbo, and we really didn't know what we were going to do with it. However, in June, when I went to committee, we did make a decision that we would like to move forward and build this store for a 2015 opening. Obviously, we can't make the December 31st this year. We would anticipate starting in May and opening probably sometime in November or December of next year, which would require a one-year extension of our agreement. And we'd like to note that there was some serious consideration of just paying the liquidated damages and putting the project up for sale. But the decision was made by the company that we do want a store in Albany, we do want to move forward with this project, and we'd like to do so. And part of the problem when we reviewed this project again is frankly, we just overestimated what we thought the store could do sales-wise. We were used to the heyday, so to speak, when our stores were really doing extremely well. And, you know, we've reevaluated things and we've looked at it, but we are willing to move forward with the project. So, we would need a one-year extension on our opening covenant in order to obviously move forward with this project. A couple of things that you may want to note. I know there's some references to employment, and we are downsizing the store to what we call an 84K. We've taken note over the years that many cities and many municipalities have wanted us to downsize our stores from, and make them smaller, more efficient, more effective, and more environmentally friendly, and that's what we've done. In looking at what we call secondary markets, similar to Albany, we feel that an 84K, which is about 30,000 feet smaller, is a very effective and efficient store to operate in a market like this. And it will effectively do probably the same or very close to the same volume as the previous store that we had developed and we're going to put in the city. And I don't believe it'll have any effect on the employment at the store. Employment in our stores are driven primarily by the volumes the store generates. And to give you an example, we have a high-volume store in San Francisco, California, which is 107,000 feet, which is smaller than the store we're putting in Albany. That has 250 employees versus a store we have in West Covina, that's a very low-volume store, that's 170,000 feet. That has 104 employees. And then if you look at one in between, which is South San Francisco, which is sort of in between, and it's the same-sized store that we originally proposed in here, that employs 124 people. So, primarily, although I can't say they'd be exactly the same, but our employment is typically generated by the volume, the sales volume of the store. So, I think there's some other things we need to probably work out with staff. We believe that the store is about 21% smaller than our original size, not 35%. Our original store was about 150,000 feet, including a garden center, and the current store is about 120,000 feet. So, with that, what we're requesting is a one-year extension of our, of our opening covenant, and we hope that that's something that you'll consider. And I'm open for questions.
And may I supplement from, if I could supplement, I don't mean to, you may have questions for Mr. Stoner, but I'd like to correct some of the things Mr. Tomlin said. First of all, the provision in our contract is not a penalty. There's no penalty for building or not building. There's liquidated damages clause. And what that, that's a vehicle that's often used when it would be difficult to ascertain what the exact dollar loss would be. And so, the parties agree in advance on a formula, not a penalty. It is a, an amount or a computation that both sides agree represents a realistic sum for damages. The other thing I want to say is I don't, I think you're free to make whatever decisions you choose. I would not be concerned about precedent in a situation like this where you are being asked to waive a contract term. It doesn't create a legal precedent. It may create an argument precedent, but frankly, we have very few of these development agreement situations. And so, I don't think you should be concerned about precedent and make whatever decision you think is appropriate. And I do want to say I appreciate Mr. Stoner's candor. We talked earlier today. I encouraged him to be candid with you and put the cards on the table, and I appreciate the fact that he's done that in a straightforward manner this evening.
So, you were saying, because I think what we were hearing, it was going to be an 85,000 square foot building. So, you're saying now it's 120?
It's, our site plans are confusing. It's called an 84K. The 84 represents the retail floor area. So, when you add the retail floor area, the offices, the staging area, and the garden center, it comes up to 120,000 feet. The previous building, I believe, was a 103K, which also represents the retail floor area. But when you included the balance of the building and the garden center, it came out to 150. It's confusing.
So, the 120,000, how much, how many square feet is, would be in the garden?
About 15,000.
Okay.
Approximately.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right. Questions? So, Rich, and then Floyd.
I've got a couple. Is there anything in the way that Lowe's does business that would engender larger sales of your products in the marketplace? I mean, when you come in, I mean, if it doesn't, when you come in and you're selling nuts and bolts, you're going after the same nut and bolt that someone else is going to buy when they walk in, well, McDonald Industrial or whatsoever. Or is there some way that you're going to make a larger nut and bolt demand by your advertising, by your proposals, by your, whatever it is?
Well, I think historically, from what I know, and from what I, what I think I know, we typically grow the market. When a Lowe's comes into town, you find that the home improvement dollars spent generally increase. And there's probably a variety of reasons for that, but we always find that a lot more people seem to start home improvement projects and start doing additional things in their yards. So, we have always felt that we grow the market when we come into a market, even though many of our products are similar to what competitors would sell in the market. We're a little bit different because, you know, we function very well in markets with True Value and Ace Hardware because they're just a little different. They're, they're a little bit more service-oriented, they have a little bit of a different niche than we do. So, they seem to function fine along with us in most of the markets that we're in. I'm not sure that answered your question, but...
Well, it kind of did. A second, when, when you're someplace and the orange big box moves in next to you, or they're there and you move in next to them, you're competing with them head-to-head.
Correct.
And does that mean you give better service? Or does that mean that prices get shaved? Or all the above?
We consider ourselves to be a little bit different than Home Depot. Brand X, we call them sometimes. But they do a very substantial business with contractors. We don't, although we are trying to grow that end of our business. We try to orient our stores frankly towards the female buyer because we think they make a lot of the decisions. We believe that our stores are sort of more retail-oriented and have more of a retail image, and that's what we try to push. So, we see ourselves a little bit more as a retailer. But to answer your question, we do compete clearly head-to-head with Home Depot. And typically, we've seen in markets in the past, and, you know, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, that if we're... But to answer your question, we do compete clearly head-to-head with Home Depot. And typically, we've seen in markets in the past, and, you know, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, that if we'll come into a market with Depot, or Depot comes into a market with us, and we'll see a significant drop in sales, but it'll come back over a period of time.
I guess I have, well, I know that when, when Home Depot showed up, we had more than one building supply store go out of business. We've had, you know, businesses affected by it. And when we receive, when we, because you are going to put in less of whatever, that means there are less taxes. That means there's less money for transportation. I mean, it's maybe less employment, but generally, if, if you have employment, there's only so many man-hours worth of supplies out there. I own a welding supply store, so, I mean, and Mitch and I compete with each other on this little thing and that little thing, but mostly, we don't. But there is, in fact, when we're receiving less, but we didn't pay less. The people in the city of Albany paid four, five million dollars for something that may not even have been necessary had we started at the level of business that you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe that was at 85,000, and I'm not, I'm not saying I know that, but our costs did not go down. Our expenses went up, and because of a shift in the amount of money generated, payoff will be longer. At some point, I mean, it's going to affect every supplier in town, because when you compete with Home Depot, you're competing with me too. If you sell a Mazdan Power pole, and you probably do, that's something, one less that I get to sell or that Mitch gets to sell. It affects everybody. You're not paying that price. We are. Moreover, we are paying the price for the improvements via the fact that we live here and pay taxes. So, yes. Is there anything you can tell me that, well gee, I forgot something here?
No, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay. Thank you.
Floyd?
Yeah, a couple of things and some of the questions I had, Mr. Stoner's already answered. But one, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I want to see us move forward either based upon the original agreement or some modification thereof. The first question I had, and I think you substantially answered, is why was the construction delayed a year? And what I heard you say is it was an internal Lowe's decision to evaluate your market and the stores that you needed to build. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yes, it is accurate. We basically, for all intents and purpose for a period of time, stopped building stores.
Is the smaller footprint store an absolute firm condition of Lowe's moving forward in Albany?
I don't, I don't know. It's a store we'd like to build in Albany. It's a new prototype. Could we go back to the 103? It's possible. But I mean, one of the reasons why we downsized the store to an 84K is frankly, it's a lot more environmentally friendly. It's a smaller store, it's more efficient, doesn't use the same utilities. And our goal as we're moving forward is to try to scale back, scale down our stores where and when we can.
So with the reduced footprint, you would still maintain the same lot configuration that you brought to the planning commission with the...
Yes, sir.
...consent of approval?
Yes, sir.
You wouldn't be selling off a portion of the parcels?
No, we'd actually looked at the site plan with the possibility of maybe even adding a pad out front, thinking that that might soften the look of the project, but we don't think there's room for it. It's just not that much smaller, the design.
And if you could please, not tonight, but within a week or 10 days, submit back to the staff a comparison of the 150,000 square foot versus the 120,000 that you're now proposing for the number and types of department and the square footage that you're allocating to each.
Okay.
Having been in the, on the fringes of the development business, when I saw your proposal, it raised the question in my mind of going back through the land use process. And given the approvals that you currently have, both from the city, ODOT, and DEQ, my question, if I were sitting in a room having a discussion with you, is are you sure you want to do that?
Well, I'm not an engineer, but I, we have discussed this internally in our preliminary design on an 84K, and we don't think we're going to have any problems primarily because we're scaling down the project rather than increasing the size of it. Now, maybe we're wrong there and we should go back and look at that, but preliminarily, I don't think we're too worried about that.
I think that would be a reasonable answer if we knew that all the standards were the same this year as they were in 2011. But as we've seen, state agencies and even our own city change our own, our standards over time. And when you go back through the process, you generally have to comply with the standards that are adopted at the time you receive your final approval.
I'll go back and review that.
I mean, knowing the problems you had with DEQ and ODOT for your access, sometimes it's better not to stick the hornet's nest.
Point's well taken.
And then what I also heard you say is that you would be willing to have a conversation with staff based upon the direction from council to try to put a package together that would benefit both Lowe's and the city.
Certainly.
Okay. And just for the record, if I may, Mayor, in the paper and elsewhere, since we started talking about this issue last, came out last week, there's been some comparison between Lowe's and the Pepsi issue. And I just want to say that I think there's entirely different issues. We had a contract with Pepsi and they defaulted on the contract. We had remedies identified within that contract. Lowe's has not defaulted. Lowe's is asking for reconsideration of some of the conditions. They want to come, we want them here, and we're trying to reach an agreeable solution. So, for people to compare Lowe's and Pepsi is not accurate.
Thank you. Yeah. Ray?
Interesting that, and I'll back up just a second from my own history. Spent close to 25 years managing JCPenney stores and have helped open several of the big ones back in the day when they did that also. They've also been downsized quite a bit, to say the least. Having said that, if you're going to be maintaining the same parcel all the way and holding on to that, is there a possibility as part of the process for long-term use, if you see the business growing, that you would have the design set such that it could in fact be expanded back to a larger footprint if it's already in place? You've already got the property ready to do that?
I don't, I don't think we would design it for the possibility of expansion. I think we'd leave the design the way it is. I think the company's feeling now and the direction that we're going is that the smaller stores are more effective and more efficient than, for us to operate.
Much easier to staff, I do know that, yes.
And frankly, our internet business is growing substantially too, so...
Yeah, I'm just happy to see you come and we want to make this happen.
What's the size of the Salem store?
I don't know, but my guess would be that would be a 117K, which would be about 170 to 175,000 feet.
Thank you.
Bill then, or were you done, Ray? Yeah, okay. Bill then, Betsy.
Somebody just mentioned the Salem store. I've shopped there before and other people have as well, and I believe you have a store in Eugene.
We do.
What do you anticipate the drop in sales at those stores since people like myself won't be driving out of town anymore?
The, there was no impact on the West Eugene store, and there was very minimal impact on the Salem store. I can't tell you how much, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was very insignificant because of the distance.
Okay. I just thought maybe we'd keep more dollars local because people wouldn't be driving to Salem or Eugene to shop at Lowe's, they could shop here, but...
You know, what usually happens is, is the sales that will remain in Salem will be people that work up there and may live down here.
Sure.
And that's typically what we see in our POS studies, is when you have the residual sales transfer from store to store, it's related a lot to employment rather than just, you know, a trip up to the store. But I'm guessing off the top of my head, it'd probably be less than 5%.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Stoner, you've actually used the word that I was going to use, because I'm co-owner of a construction business, and when the counselors are talking about businesses going out of business because, you know, Lowe's is coming in, you know, whatever, the word niche is a very good one. Par Lumber has, I mean, it's smaller than Home Depot or Lowe's, and they have their own niche. They have their specialties that contractors will go to. Home Depot has theirs. Lowe's is going to have theirs. Now, between Home Depot and Lowe's, what I can gather is it's going to be service to the contractors that's going to make a big difference. And so, but I don't, I don't believe, you know, like Par, I don't know, I think there's still a lumber company out in tangent or something like that, you know? But still, everybody has their own, is closer to some people, so they have their business come from the locals. And so, that doesn't bother me as much as, actually, I don't see any downsize, downturn to any of this because it's going to be jobs. My, and actually, it's going to be the size that we kind of wanted in the beginning, that actually fits with our codes. And so, I do appreciate, you know, you coming, like Jim says, you know, being honest and saying where you are and what you're doing. The council's dilemma is going to be, it's a contract, a contractor's a contract. And so that's where we're going to, hopefully, if we direct staff, whichever way we go, that we can work something out because we do want you here. Another question is, do you, with the other stores that you were going to open and you decided not to, had you made the same, like, deals with them where they had done a lot of infrastructure and then you decided not to build? Or were they just bare land and you just stopped before you got too far?
You know, I'm not familiar with all the deals that are in my region.
Oh, sure. I don't expect you to.
What I can tell you is I have, in my region, which is west of the Mississippi, I have about 15 probably sites that we purchased and elected not to build on. Of those sites, we have built on one in California, and this would be the second one. The rest of them, we still own. Some of them, we have put on the market for sale, and some of them, we're just land banking for the moment.
Yes.
So it's always, you know, needless to say, there's two other regions always competing for our new store development, so I want to keep them in my region, they want to keep them in their region. So, when you have 12 stores that you're building a year, and half of them are new stores in urban markets, which is where we really want to do a lot of our expansion, there's a lot of competition for those sites. But this site is, it's approved. It's in the capital budget for next year.
Right. But the other, the other sites, you...
Some of them, we had infrastructure agreements, and some of them, we didn't. I can't, I can't pinpoint which ones...
That's okay. I mean, we don't, I just wondered if...
It's a mixed bag.
Yeah, if it had happened before, you know, because, you know, cities have, all, most cities are under budget constraints, and so that is one of the reasons. But I just hope we can work something out, because I want it here because that'll save my husband from going to Salem all the time.
So, Mr. Stoner, it's, it is encouraging to see that Lowe's is looking at more eco-friendly type footprints of a building. And, and so that is encouraging and looking at more, you know, more of efficiency, you know, within the, you know, the walls of the, each one of the retailers. But I do, you know, I do want you to think of this, is I, a lot of us have been up here a long time, and I have sat here for 18 years, and this is the first time I've ever seen a retailer get this much of infrastructure paid for. So I think you should feel very fortunate for how much the city contributed to this project. Even if there was the penalty of up to 2 million, you're still coming out with a bargain on that. So, we're here to work with you on this and to make sure it's going to be the right fit. But whatever you do to this parcel is, if all of a sudden you come back and decide you don't want to build, or you have in the works of a different retailer to go to this site, that is something that's not really, you know, we, as, as a city, we look at building our great neighborhoods, and we want to make sure it would be the right fit for this neighborhood. Building a smaller footprint will please the neighborhood because they had a lot of concerns over the size of the building that was proposed originally. So building a smaller footprint will, will please the neighborhood. But we just want to make sure that this isn't being, shrinking a building down then to sell to another retailer that might not be the right fit for the neighborhood. So, I just, I hope that is not in the works and that this is truly going to be Lowe's shrinking of a store then.
I can assure you that that is not something that we'd even consider. Our intention right now is to move forward and build this building, assuming we can, we can do so. And we think it's the right fit for the community, and we wouldn't be making the further investment if we didn't think we could, we could, we could be a very good asset and tenant in the community.
Okay. Thank you. We have that on the record now. Okay. Counsel?
I want to thank you for having your contractor out there cleaning up the site this last week.
Oh, sorry that took so long.
Yeah, that...
We don't have any vendors around here close, so it took a little while. I apologize for that.
That does help, because, and I know our staff has talked to you about erecting a sign out there saying "Future Home of Lowe's."
We can do that.
2015. We all get several phone calls a week, what's happening with Lowe's, and there's always speculation out there about Lowe's has sold it to company X and, you know, they're coming. We have to say, we haven't heard that. So if you can erect a sign that assures the community that you are coming, that will be very beneficial.
And what date?
Yeah, and...
Especially point that at the Chinese restaurant?
Yeah.
Because every time I walk in, I get nailed.
Okay. I'll work on that.
I do appreciate the fact that you had a contractor out there working on it. It's kind of, kind of difficult when we ask people to keep the weeds down for fire hazards and our prime commercial site has a problem.
And if they can keep the ongoing maintenance, we'd be very pleased seeing that.
We will.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any other questions? So, we appreciate you. Do you have any other questions of us, or...
I don't. Just thank you very much for your time.
And then we'll be working with you to come up with a resolution.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
So, Mayor, for the, for the benefit of the community...
Yeah.
We're asking our staff to get together with Mr. Stoner to review their proposal and try to work out a compromise based upon their market needs and the conditions of approval that they already had and what they might want to do in the future, and to take into consideration some of the questions we've asked tonight.
Okay. All right. Okay. Jim?
Could I have a chance to perhaps, you could continue and I could be Mr. Stoner for just a few minutes outside?
Yes, yeah, you can. Jim will meet with you outside.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Counsel. Next, we just have a couple of quick, quick items. We need to accept Wendy Ezell's resignation from the Planning Commission. This is on page four.
I would move that we accept Wendy's resignation from the Planning Commission and send her a letter of thanks, and I really, really, really hate to accept her resignation.
Okay. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next would be accepting Peggy Croceen's resignation from the Arts Commission and the Traffic Safety Commission.
Same motion, different name. Same motion, different name.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sure we send letters of thank you to all of them.
Yep. Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And next would be accepting Dana Croceen's resignation from the Community Development Commission and the Planning Commission.
Same motion, different name.
Okay.
Same second.
All right.
Same comment.
Okay. I know it's really unfortunate to lose him from the community, and they just kind of found a new home on the coast. But, okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Next is, we have a public hearing, and this one's authorizing the sale of surplus property on Main Street, north of Front Avenue, not needed for public use. And is there a staff report on this?
Is that the picture of the property?
I don't know if you want to hear of that, please.
That's on the far south end.
Because we need to keep that.
Is this one, okay, this is your lead? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'll be very brief. The staff report for this public hearing and sale begins on page seven, and I'm passing around on the dais copy of the map and information from our real estate agent that was provided on the sale of this. And a shout out to Counselor Johnson for reminding me about the map. I apologize that that wasn't in your packet. So, the piece that we're talking about is located at the very north end of Main Street. It's a little snippet of land that the city acquired when Main Street was vacated, and Edgewater Village is looking to purchase this piece of land at full market value from us to incorporate into their project to be able to fit one more house in that area. The proposed purchase price is $4,205.33, and again, that's the amount that was outlined and recommended by our real estate agent. Should you approve of the sale after the public hearing, there is a updated resolution on the dais for you. My bad, I'd made a couple of mistakes on that, didn't catch it, so we have a revised one for your consideration there on the dais. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or the city attorney for the hard ones, as well as Mr. Diamond and his wife are in the audience tonight and, and available for questions as well.
For adoption of the resolution?
Wait, we have a public hearing.
Let's call for it.
Okay. Any questions of Kate?
I do. Now, Kate, is this, is this part of tax lot 1800 or 1700?
It is, it's tax lot 1800.
Okay. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. So...
So, does that cut off access to this big lot here between Sherman and Bain, the river in front?
It does not, because there's still access to the east of this parcel that's looking to be purchased. And in fact, their site plan includes a little path going through there as Main Street. And so, there'll still be river access to the Dave Clark Path. And then also, remember that lot there to the, to the east that Counselor Olson is referring to is now the community garden for the city and the neighborhood that's been very popular and funded by CARO.
So, it's all, it's all one big lot, so you do have access. And would there ever be any reason to subdivide that lot?
To subdivide that lot? The large one? No. No. I, I think when, when we determine to turn it into a community garden, boy, my memory's a little foggy on this, but there were some reasons why it wasn't going to work as a lot to sell long term. We had identified it as a potential pocket park in the future.
Does the city own that big lot?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, and that's where the community garden is.
Any questions? Okay. With that, we will open the public hearing at 8:10 PM, and nobody signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this surplus property? All right. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at the same time. And Counsel, there is a resolution of this on page eight, or do you have any more questions?
Go ahead. Come on. On the dais.
Okay.
Be the resolution on the dais.
Oh, the revised one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. There's been a motion, and there's a second?
Question. I'm just curious as to why that one paragraph was taken out of the original resolution.
Thanks, thanks for asking, Counselor. I had used a resolution that had previously been used by Gordon Stephanzmeier in the Public Works Department. He had forwarded it to me to make my life easier, which was wonderful, except that I forgot to take out the paragraph referring to 41st Avenue, which has absolutely nothing to do with this project.
Oh, okay.
And had to do with the previous resolution. So, my, again, my apologies for the mistake there.
So, and none of us on the council caught that?
Well, and I would say five, we were joking, five sets of people looked at it, but I take full responsibility. Yep.
I'm surprised we didn't catch it. Now, if Ralph Reed was here...
Ralph rolling over.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. Any more questions?
Yeah, does it, I thought I saw what we were going to give, get for it, the amount, and I can't see that now either.
You bet. So, it's on the bottom of page seven, so the sale price is $4,205.33.
Oh, I see. Okay. It's not in the resolution, it's just in...
Yeah. Which, again, I want to underscore, is the, the market value for this property. So, we're, we're not subsidizing this. They're paying full freight for this snippet of land with the understanding that this will be a great complement for their project, but they completely understood that we have already committed quite a bit through our urban renewal commitments to make the project happen.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? All right. There's a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right. Thank you, George. Yeah. All right. Next is Business from the Public, and I think Edgar, you had an item you'd like to bring And is the remote mic still there? Can you be able to get right on up to the mic there?
Thank you. Good evening. My name, my name's Edgar Hahn Jr. I live at 1560 Davidson Street, southeast, number 321, Albany, Oregon, 97322, and my phone number is 541-926-1677. Tonight, I'd like to discuss Waverly Lake. Mary Canopa, I gave her some photographs and a 20-minute DVD of the lake. Recently, Alex Paul mentioned in his article, the lake, the lake offers gentle, gently sloped grassy banks and also has access for disabled anglers. Also, he stated, Waverly Lake is an example of a silk purse, making a silk purse out of a salzier. Most of Waverly Lake is overgrown with bushes, shrubs, blackberry vines, trees, which crowd out the best fishing areas. Some of the fishing spots have huge rocks, which, when wet, could be slippery, a slippery situation for young fishermen. These rocks should be removed for safety and liability. Waverly Lake needs a makeover. If the Parks Department would clean out the jungle of vegetation on the southwest bank and the west bank, a handicap pier, wooden pier, could be constructed. This pier could be for the handicap, young children, and families. Picnic tables, barbecue stands could be placed, so all the lakes' banks could be utilized. Having a multi-use pier for fishing, Albany could sponsor statewide handicap and children fishing derbies. On Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, the day before Veterans Day, a veterans fishing derby, January 1st on New Year's Day. Fred Meyers, Walmart, Target, or Buy Mart could sponsor each of the different holiday fishing derbies. If properly sponsored, these events could be good for tourism, which would provide revenue for motels, restaurants, and gas stations, maybe new industries. In Alex Paul's article, he mentioned Waverly Lake started out as a gravel pit in 1939. Waverly Lake is 75 years old this year. Over the last 75 years, silt, sediment, and other debris has accumulated. It may be time to clean out the lake. The city could drain the lake and excavate the debris and make the lake deeper, or the city maintenance department could build a dredge and use the dredge to clean out not only Waverly Lake, but also Timberland Lake, the Swan Lakes, and three of the freeway lakes. The city maintenance department could construct and place portable aerators in Waverly Lake to keep the water from stagnate, stagnating in the summertime, which causes algae, algae and other pollutants. The city's maintenance department could devise and maybe install filters in the lake or drill a freshwater well and pump fresh water in the lake in June, July, and August. It's up to Parks Department and the city of Albany's pride concerning what Waverly Lake's future may be. Waverly Lake could be a great and well-known fishing lake if the city would utilize this resource. Now, I've given Mary Canopa the photographs and a DVD, 20-minute DVD of the lake. Also, I've given you some articles off the internet about dredges and aerators. Now, these are just some suggestions that I'm proposing. I've lived in Albany since 1949, and I fished the lake in the 50s and the 60s when I was in grade school and junior high school. The lake is not the same as it was in the 50s and 60s. We need to do something with that lake. I wish you'd go down, take a look at that lake, think over what I've discussed tonight, and if you have any other solutions, I'd, I'd be appreciated, I would appreciate it, if you could do something, not only for handicap fisher, fishermen, fisher people, the kids. When I was a kid, all the neighbor kids would go down there and fish. It's not the same. There's too much vegetation, too much blackberry bushes, vines. It needs to be cleaned out, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, Edgar, well, thank you so much. And, and actually, a lot of people don't know that the water that comes from Waverly Lake comes from Cox Creek. And so, Cox Creek, actually, we divert water from our Albany Saniam Canal into Cox Creek, so there is water throughout the summertime. Other words, it would pretty much dry up if we didn't divert, you know, water into Cox Creek. There is a lot of fishermen that do fish at Timberland, so that's kind of first lake, you know, before, as, you know, Timberland is before it gets to the Swan Lakes and Waverly Lake. But what we will do is we will have our Parks Director, he will, you know, I'll hand him your letter and, and also the packet that you handed out, and he'll get all of this addressed and have a report back to the council. So, we will address all of your questions.
You're correct. Cox Creek goes, it flows through Timberland, through the Swan Lakes, and through Waverly Lake. Right now, there's very little flow, if any.
And part of that is we're regulated of how much water we can divert into Cox Creek. So, we have almost, so much water rights through Albany, and then we've got to get permission to be able to divert off to Cox Creek and Burkhardt Creek, is what we also divert from the canal.
Okay. See, I didn't know this. Now, what's the possibility of getting approval to increase the flow?
Right. And that's where we'll have our Parks Director check in on it, and he'll report back. And our Public Works Director, too, will have to be looking at what the flow requirements are. So, we'll get all that addressed for you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate. Thank you, Edgar. Thank you for caring, too, about our parks and our lakes. Thank you.
Aren't the Swan Lakes private?
Swan is private, but not the water. Yeah. We're the ones that divert the water.
The lake itself, both lakes are private lakes.
Yeah. Yeah. Both of them are. Okay. All right. And next, anybody else from Business from the Public? Bye, Larry. Okay. All right. Mr. Clausen, anything new this evening?
Of course.
And quick?
And quick? Are you trying to get rid of me, or you want to get out of here?
Jim Clausen, 1403 15th. I thought I'd bring your attention to something that I read on the Drudge Report today. I don't know how many of you read Drudge Report. It's a news aggregate site on the internet that they get about 35 million hits per day on the site. It's a very good site. But they, they mentioned a small town in Minnesota, I can't remember the name of it, Comacilla or something, I don't, it began with a C. And they had an election this year for the mayor. The new, the new mayor's name is Duke, and he's a dog. So, if you, any of you people that are running, if you have somebody named Fido running against you, you probably should look out. But that's pretty much it. That's all I want to share.
So evidently, Duke's able to sign a document, sign his name.
Aut print.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else from Business from the Public? All right. Seeing anyone? Next, we've got some ordinances, and this is on page 10, is the first one, and would you like to read the first reading?
Yes, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 3.40 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to AT&amp;T Corp. for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise and declaring an emergency.
Revised on the dais.
And I'm reading the one on the dais.
Okay.
That will be the case with all three of these franchises.
Okay. All right.
I've moved that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 3.40 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to AT&amp;T Corporation for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise and declaring an emergency.
For the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next is the next ordinance, and this is on the light speed one.
This is an ordinance amending Chapter 3.70 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Lightspeed Networks, Inc., for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise and declaring an emergency.
Moved that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 3.70 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Lightspeed Networks... non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Light Speed Networks, Inc. for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise, and declaring an emergency.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Bill?
I don't know if Jeff or somebody can tell you, I'm not familiar with Light Speed Networks, so just, anybody know what they do, or are they just passing through like we discussed on Monday? Maybe they don't necessarily operate in town, but...
If you could give some information, they do provide high-speed fiber throughout the community. Actually, I'm not sure how much in the community, they do however provide connection of fiber optics among city buildings, and with the city contracts with, uses the broadband that's provided by LS Networks for its interconnection.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is on the back page, and this one would be the first reading of the ordinance for the Astound Broadband.
An ordinance adopting Chapter 3.80 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Astound Broadband LLC for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system, fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise, and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance adopting Chapter 3.80 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Astound Broadband LLC for construction and operation of a telecommunications system, fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise, and declaring an emergency.
Move that we adopt the ordinance.
Jordan? All right, any discussion? Okay, Bill?
Same question, I'm not familiar with Astound Broadband.
Astound would be, this is a new franchise, whereas the previous two were renewals, so they already have plant in the community. Astound is building high-speed broadband from Vancouver, Canada to San Francisco, and since we're along the High Five Corridor, we're among those communities that they're seeking franchise authority in order to install the broadband. It's a very high-speed broadband, they feel that they'll be able to provide a service that's not yet readily available in the community. At this point, though, they don't have any infrastructure built. And so, it's a new franchise, and they anticipate beginning construction in the start of 2015. Thank you.
All right, any more questions?
I appreciate staff securing the indexing of the fees.
All right, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next, council is adoption of resolutions, and the first one is on page 35, is that resolution, and this is for property tax abatement agreement approving the enterprise own status. This would be provided Northwest. Did you have any questions from staff, or not?
I didn't have any questions, just to comment, it's nice to see one $5 million project and one $6.5 million project going in and increasing our manufacturing employment base.
Good companies, fortunate. All right.
And just another slight comment, Viper was one of the recipients of some of our care funding.
Keep them going in the community.
And now they're expanding again.
Yeah, really sparked their expansion.
Do we know that all the other parties have approved yet?
Probably John would know. Have they?
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, all right, we need a motion.
I move approval of the resolution, first one's on page 35.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next would be the one for ATI Pacific Cast Technologies on page 39.
Move approval of the resolution on page 39, just seeing it's 33 new employees over the three years.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, thank you, John.
Yes.
And next is adoption of the consent calendar, there's only two items on it, so I'll entertain a motion unless somebody would like to have one pulled off.
Move adoption. Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and I also would like to comment on this, that I think this is a wonderful idea for the police department to be donating the police pickup to Safe Haven, so thank you so much. I know it's very needed with them, so that's wonderful. Thank you, Chief. Okay, next, we have report and code enforcement from Marilyn.
Thank you, and first I want to apologize, this is the first, you may have noticed this, but you're too polite to say anything, this is the first code enforcement report you've had since the end of the second quarter. My time was sort of taken up for about six months of the year with another project, and this fell by the wayside. Something had to go, and this was it. However, we have continued to soldier on, we have focused once again on projects that are of primary importance to neighborhoods or the community at large, and at that, at this time, those projects are grass and weed abatement and vacant houses. And those, most of those fall on the shoulders of one person, Mary Gaeta in the Building Division. And the dangerous houses get priority, everything else is second, but the grass abatement has taken a considerable amount of her time this year because of the long hot, dry spells that we've had routinely since spring. We're trying to stay on top of them, some people are mowing, some people caved into the first warning letters we gave to them, others are a little more reluctant, but we're following up on it. Mary's doing it as often as she can. We've also, in the last few months, come across, actually, the last few weeks, come across a couple of other problem properties that we maybe were considering some accelerated demolition proceedings possibly. Another duplex that is, has been neglected over near Sunrise Park, and then the vacant house that's mentioned here on Pitt Street, we're trying to get that down before school starts, because it remains an attractive nuisance. Another thing, one more thing I wanted to mention is that our continued efforts to pick up other people's leavings in planter strips and on the highway, and there seems to be an awful lot of unwanted large furniture in town, and when it stays in a visible location for a little too long, we call Republic Services, they pick it up. Otherwise, if it's in a location where it's identifiable, like somebody's front yard, we're giving littering citations. For the benefit of the council and the YouTube public, I did some research today, I suspected this was the case, but I wasn't certain. I know that, and you all probably know, too, that if you have things that don't fit in your garbage cart, that you would like someone else to haul away for you, that could be a big box, it could be a washing machine, it could be said couch or box springs, you can put it out with your trash, call the garbage company, and they will pick it up. They'll charge you an extra fee. The fee isn't very much. It depends on where you live, but it ranges in the, it can go from like $5 for whatever up to 40. For a couch, it's in the $30 range, for a mattress and box springs, in the $25 range per. Those are prices from my neighborhood, you have to give, I gave them my address today to kind of check. If you want to take a load, haul your own load out to the dump, first 500 pounds is $30 to take it out to Coffin Butte. The fine for, the potential fine for littering citation is $1,280. I think that you can see the benefit to taking care of the problem yourself. And I gave that information today to the community service officers, and they're going to be, they'll add that to their education of the people they come in contact with. We haven't given too many littering citations out yet, I imagine most of them are dismissed before they ever get to court because people take care of the problem, but still, it makes a point, that the community looks really bad when we have barkaloungers on planter strips and at every intersection, so...
Mattress and things like that, yeah.
I'm surprised people tolerate it in their neighborhoods as much as they do, and they often don't.
Oh, I know. And I did get a call from a resident today that I was over Tall Grass, that Benton County said that the property was in the city limits, and when I looked it up, no, it was in Benton County. So, they will call Benton County again about seeing if they can do something.
Yeah, we, it continues to be frustrating for us and for the public, because we can't do anything unless it's a fire hazard. We can't insist that they do anything unless it's fire season. And people will call and say, oh, it's a fire hazard. Well, two inches of rain have fallen in the last two hours, and it's green as can be, but it bothers them because it looks bad. And it's, and it's bad for abandoned properties, we have some landscape companies who will come in and mow the front yard, and they never get to the backyards, and the backyard's up above the fence, and it just tears down the value of the neighborhood. It's damaging to the assets that the banks are trying to protect until they can put them back on the, on the market. I wonder how much they're actually trying to protect them sometimes, but it just doesn't look good. It doesn't look good, and it, and it's bad for the community.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you.
Do you think a lot of these houses have been foreclosed? Is that a lot of the problem?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
Do you have any ideas what the city could do to speed up the, finishing up the foreclosure process?
If we knew what we could do, we would be gods. Honestly, it'd take, Jim might have a better idea, but no, the, these properties get passed back and forth to different lenders, and then everybody decides, no, it's not ours, and it's a nightmare.
I think part of the problem was caused by a lot of subprime mortgages, which overvalued properties, and then there can be multiple liens, and sometimes it takes a while to sort out all those liens. We do have provisions, however, under state law now, where we can hold financial institutions accountable for maintenance of the property while it is in foreclosure, while it's in their hands, and where possible, we do that.
And that's, that's the best thing that's happened to us for years.
We do have additional tools in that regard.
Marilyn, does anybody have you look at the, on Gary Street north of Salem?
Mm-hmm.
I think it is where the two halves of manufactured home are stored, on the west side of the street.
The mayor asked me about that sometime, although I have not looked at that, but thanks for the reminder.
I've known them to have been there at least 35 days, and they're not, they're not stored in there in a manner in which they can be put together, they're opposite?
It's like somebody dropped them there.
They're actually proposed for the backyard.
Yeah.
It's proposed to put, the lot evidently is big enough, and they plan on placing it in the backyard, kind of like a flag lot. How that's going to fit, I don't know, but planning does, has been working on that, and I think public works, so it's kind of a, an issue that's been going on for a while. But, no, good question. Yeah, Bill?
So Marilyn, or maybe even Jim, on this last item, 18134, I received a call from a constituent and drove by and looked at it, and I think that's when I called you Marilyn.
Yeah.
Do we have any options? You know, I'm reading multiple court appearances, and continues the same activity, and fines are overdue, you know, is it, do we have the capability, and is a few days in jail work for an individual like this, or not?
Yes, and I don't know whether or not jail time has been ordered on these, we customarily, we customarily do not seek to use jail for junk prosecutions. In years past, the city council has chided us from time to time if it seemed we were being too aggressive on junk and appearance issues. So, we generally try to get compliance, but yes, in situations where you have somebody who just thumbs in their nose and says this, and yes, we'll, it gets to the point where we ask for jail. I don't know the facts of this particular one, but if it's a drug house, there's also specified crime property sanctions that can be imposed, and I don't know whether there has been an effort to do that or not.
Yes, we've, we've got multi, multi-pronged attacks on this one. Actually, I believe the chief has witnessed at least one drug transaction out there on a visit that he made. It's, there are, there are drug cases out there, that's junk and trash, there's the, there are development and zoning code violations, operating a recreational vehicle park in the wrong zone, and substandard on top of that, and the junk and trash, and the failure to pay fines. It's, and we've got a defendant who has a very interesting personality, and some different ideas about what, what, about how the law should be interpreted, and what he should be allowed to do with his personal property.
Well, and while I...
Shaun's really working on it hard, and so is the police department.
And while I don't know the specifics of this case, want to understand, one of the other problems that we deal with, and this may or may not be the case here, is we have a lot of people who have severe mental health issues that are in our system. And the court, the jail won't take people with severe mental health issues, we often can't legally convict people with severe mental health issues, we can commit people with severe mental health issues if we are prepared to basically fund unlimited stays in state hospital if they meet the criteria, which is a prohibitive burden. The state, in my opinion, has abrogated their responsibility for people with severe mental disabilities, and there are people that are falling through the cracks because there is not an effective way to deal with it. Again, I am not saying that is the case here, I do not know, but sometimes you'd think you'd almost have to have some difficulties if you'd want to live in situations like this, and just continue to ignore the efforts of law enforcement. Again, I don't know if that is the case in this.
I think a lot of it in this case is just ignoring the law enforcement, but there's been a lot of issues I've had calls on, and, I mean, they even just have a legal political sign up that's way up too early. I mean, it's, no matter what...
It is obscured by grass.
Yeah.
That's about three feet tall.
They're just never going to comply, I think, but it is very blighted of a property, and I'm just glad the police department's been working on it and code enforcement working on it, but I think we're going to have to stay on top of this one.
We have, we have planning, building, police, and the city attorney all working on this one.
Yeah. Good, that's the team.
I want to say, even though it's short, and I know you've been really busy Marilyn, but I always want to compliment you on making it interesting. The way you, the way you write is just great, but can you explain to me, I've got, I've got two things, but an attractive nuisance, does that mean like it's attractive to someone to go there and do bad things, or?
Yes, that's a legal term. Mr. Delaporte can probably, I know I've always been amused by that term myself, but...
I thought you...
It's generally unattractive to regular people, but it attracts...
An attractive nuisance is a condition which, because it attracts inappropriate action, is a nuisance. An unsecured refrigerator is an attractive nuisance to children.
Amen.
Because it attracts them to enter the refrigerator, the door to close, and the children to die. So, it is the attraction to harm that makes it a nuisance.
I knew she wouldn't make a typo, I just knew it. The other thing is, is...
Marilyn never makes a typo.
Oh, I have. Very rarely.
Does code enforcement have anything to do with shopping carts?
The police department has everything to do with shopping carts.
Okay, all right, because we discussed that a while ago, and I went back in and read the ordinance and stuff, and it does say that we can pick them up and we can dispose of them.
It does, but the preferred path is to contact the store directly, because it's their responsibility, they've got 72 hours to pick them up, and if they don't, we can pick them up. We do roundups periodically, and I spent a couple months since we've done one, but it's the store's responsibility. If they don't want their $300 investment, I guess that...
Right, but at the last meeting, it was said that, that we couldn't do that, and I thought, no, that's not right.
Yeah, we can, it's the last resort.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, they do get a lot that stolen, you know, you know, like Safeway has, some of them have those little double shopping carts now, you know, two-tiered or whatever, and I like to use those, and go in there, it's like, how come there's none around, and...
They're all in Periwinkle Creek.
They believe people are using them as, for their laundry, to take, to the, to get their laundry done, because you can separate them.
That's a plus.
That's pretty cool, whites and darks.
So, it's a rolling laundry basket is what they end up being, it sounds like. I thought that was kind of humorous when he told me that, but...
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on code enforcement? I want to thank you, Marilyn and the team for all your hard work on that.
We've got good people and they're just really devoted to doing it. It's not easy.
We appreciate it.
And progress is, it's slow and results are far apart.
Well, it really eases up the council's work too. Because, you know, before we ever started funding code enforcement, believe me, we had constant complaints all the time, really needed to solve the problem. And it's wonderful staff's able to really stay on top of it. But we appreciate it. Okay. Next business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Bill?
I think, thank you.
Dick? All right. Rich?
I object. That's just all it is.
Oh, that's fine.
On a positive side of the foreclosure thing, we've had a house across the street from us for over two years. It's been in foreclosure. About two weeks ago, it went on the market. And we understand from the neighbor across the street that they heard that it is now, has an offer on it. So hopefully that will resurrect that one again.
I'm noticing quick turnaround on houses once they go up for sale. It seems like they're closing, you know, selling fast.
Okay, all right, Floyd. And I didn't have anything this evening. Okay. Stuart, none of the staff have anything? So, all right. So our next meeting, I do, we don't have CARA this month. So, right, Kate, we're next month on CARA. So we have a work session August 25th, regular session August 27th. Jim?
I do have something I'd like to ask, if I may. You've asked me to go meet with Lowe's, but I don't really have any guidance. May I suggest, and this is risky, and may I suggest a compromise that I was discussing with Mr. Stoner to see if he wanted to propose and see if that has traction with the council?
So, I mean, he just mentioned a proposal to you?
No, I went out and suggested him something I thought he ought to propose. I thought he ought to propose to pay the property taxes that would have been due on the property for a year had they built on schedule. Now, while that can be hard to compute, what they could easily do is look at the difference between the property tax on a bare land value today and what it assesses for our property tax a year from now after it has been built. And they could pay twice the first year difference. And that would then make the community more or less whole in terms of the tax revenue lost. My fear is, if you ask me to push him too hard, the risk is that it goes back to committee and the committee says, we're not going to do it. We'll just pay the $2 million and walk away. So is that, I don't know whether Lowe's would propose that. I don't know if they would agree to it. Is that on the order of kinds of compromise that you might find acceptable? Or am I in left field? Do you want to give me any other direction on what you want me to do? I mean, otherwise, I will ask for everything they're prepared to give, to see. But sometimes it's nice if I have some concept. I heard members of the council speak almost in favor of the smaller store size not being a problem. It sounds like employment, I don't know if you agree with Mr. Stoner, employment is more of a factor of demand than it is size. So, again, is there any direction you'd like to give me? Am I warm?
I'm okay with negotiating towards what would have been the whole package had they been here. And in addition, I would, I would ask that they commit to paying their assessment when received. And that we enforce the liquidated damage clause in the event that they're not there on December 31st of 2015. And we kick it up. Right. So we double it.
I'm not sure if I understand what you just said, but I'll add my thought. And that is that we go ahead and start assessing the liquidated damages per the contract. So the end of January 2015, they owe us $31,000. And that continue until the store built. My idea would be to figure out a way that that ultimately be refunded. And I don't know how complicated this would be. And then I thought, okay, so now we might even be able to tie this in to Jim's thought of paying the extra taxes is that, all right, here's the deal. You pay the extra taxes for a year. We'll refund the $365,000 you paid in LDs. I don't know. I just have a little bit of heartburn with saying, sure, take another year. If you go back and look at, which was very well pointed out tonight, the city did everything we were supposed to. And Lowe's failed to do that. And while on one hand I want the store, you know, the other hand, like Larry Tomlin was saying, a contract's a contract, you know. And I battle those same things all the time. I've even had sympathetic people with ODOT saying, Bill, I know you tried hard and worked hard and had crews out here Saturday and everything else, but contracts is I get to ding you $1,000 a day. And that's just the way it is.
Well, the only counterpoint I'd give to that is, of course, if you want a Lowe's, if you make it too onerous, they're going to say no. And so I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what my bargaining power is because I don't know how hard you want me to push.
Yeah, Rich, and then Ray?
Actually, you take both suggestions. One, you raise the penalty if they don't. They don't, they aren't assessed that unless they don't. And you say, yeah, okay, fine. We're not going to collect the $1,000 a day unless you don't at the end of that time. At the end of 2015, if you're not doing it, we collect it. We collect it clear back to December 31st now. You don't have to, and if their intent is to, in fact, put it together, it costs them zero.
I like that idea.
So let me suggest, I think I generally understand. What the general parameters you've given me is that it would seem, we certainly would like them to pay the assessment when it is due and not string it out. And it would seem to me that that would be reasonable, not use bankrupt bonding to pay overtime. And I think they could probably agree to that without going back to committee, as Mr. Stoner. I mean, I don't know their internals, but maybe. And the other thing is, you want to make sure that any revision to the agreement ups the ante in the event that they don't follow through this next time in meaningful ways. And you are generally favorable with the idea of trying to look for a way to capture the tax revenue that was lost by the, caused by the delay.
I'd like to, if I could, Mary, so guess we expand that a little bit, don't limit it to the tax or also other fees?
If you go to every dime we could get, they will walk.
Some of those are-
But, I mean, my concern is, if it becomes, my fear is that you're going to get me to the point where, I heard the majority of the council say, you want Lowe's. And so if you want Lowe's-
I don't, I'm not all that hot for Lowe's. But on the other hand, I think I'd be ashamed to kill the golden goose because you're so anxious for the eggs that are inside the goose, like the foolish farmer was in that story. And can you tell me, Jim, how close they are or were to just walking away and paying their $2 million?
I cannot. I know the conversation with Mr. Stoner, he indicated, just as he indicated to you tonight, that that was one of the items under discussion.
I got the impression that they weren't just lathering to come here. I think they're thinking, well, it'd be kind of nice maybe to have a building here in Albany. But I agree, Jim. I don't, I don't think we want to push them that hard if we do want them to come here.
Well, let me try to, I mean, I will, I will look for ways, but I understand that the majority of you would like to have a compromise that can be accepted. I think I have some understanding on that. I will say that I think that one of the lessons here is that contracts with obligations are not simply vehicles for penalizing someone. Sometimes they are vehicles that help assure that what we bargain for actually comes to pass. While I do not know if the shrinkage of numbers of stores being built is as extreme as possible, and Albany is a secondary market, and they're primarily intending to build in large markets, as was said tonight, I have to wonder if, but for the $2 million liquidated damage contract, we would be getting the offer to go forward. I don't think we would, but I don't know.
Well, my understanding all along has been that when this first came to our knowledge that Lowe's was going to make a proposal, a first proposal. And that's what it is. It's their first salvo across the bow. And they know that there's going to be, you know, a return to say, okay, here's, here's round two. Where can this all come together?
But what I want to caution you on is, I don't think that I have a tremendous amount of bargaining power here. I think I've got some. I think I've communicated to Mr. Stoner that there has to be some offer from Lowe's. There has to be some consideration to the community for the loss.
He seemed to be receptive to that.
He seemed to be receptive and he indicated he would discuss it. He would talk to his people and get back to me. I have learned in my dealings with large corporations that it is a somewhat Byzantine process and that nobody has authority to say yes or no to anything without committee. And so, you know, give me, give me some latitude. I'm understanding, if I'm wrong, that the majority of you would like to see Lowe's here and that you're generally okay with a smaller footprint store on that site. And that therefore I will try to get some community value to make up for what we've lost by delay. And I will try to continue to hold their feet to the fire to make sure that whatever the new promise is, that there's more, there's even greater enforcement tools, if at all possible, to secure their compliance.
Yeah. Jim, when you started the statements, you said that we want to collect the taxes that, on the value that would have been here. And then that the city, the people would feel better about it. So now, can you tell me, the $31,000 or whatever, that that would be something that they would pay the city?
Yes. Well, yes.
Because then the rest of the citizens wouldn't get anything.
Well, it can be negotiated. What we did in, what I negotiated in the Pepsi case was rather than having Pepsi pay taxes or pay to all of the taxing districts, I negotiated that they would pay fee to the city equal to the taxes.
There's a difference there. A fee to the city because you can't tax-
Our taxing district partners might not like that, but I'm not here to protect them.
Could I interject? Every time we say what I did with Pepsi, it reminds people, it makes it sound like this is the same as Pepsi. And I'm hearing, no, this is not the same as Pepsi. And I see it's not the same as Pepsi.
It is different, but you will never-
We might want to change the way we talk about it.
You will never get me to not be proud of what we did with Pepsi.
Amen. Amen. Yeah.
We, we-
That doesn't change the perception of someone out there.
Well, I can't. Then I will, then I'll just not talk about it because I will not apologize for enforcing a contract.
So Jim, what you're suggesting then is, you shouldn't have used the word tax, right?
Wait, no, I will, it will be a fee, but I will do, I will do what you've said. I started the conversation with Mr. Stoner. He will get back to me. I will continue to pursue this. I understand not to try to drop the ball. But yet, I got the impression, I was very gratified that he was candid about the fact that there's no blame to the city and that Lowe's, for their own reasons, didn't build. They haven't tried. And I think they're entitled some credit for that, frankly. They didn't weasel. They didn't try to make excuses. And I'm less adversarial in my feelings toward them because of their straightforwardness.
Say, let's try and make a deal.
Right. So I will, I will follow up with the direction you've given.
And so my main concern is if there's any new agreement drafted up that makes sure it's still stated as Lowe's store.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Two other things, right? Marilyn?
Do we, since it was approved through the land use process, and they have those approvals, and they want to come back and do a revised site plan, basically, but we're saying that we may be in agreement with a reduction in the size of the footprint. Can we do that outside the land use process? Or can we just say, we would encourage them to do that within the land use process?
Well, I see that Jeff is anxious to give an answer to that. And I don't want that enthusiasm.
Anxious might be an overstatement. And the answer is, is it really depends with the, they're probably going to have to go through a modification process for their existing land use. But it's, what exactly, what exact hoops they have to jump through is going to be, depend on what exactly they propose. But in talking with Bob this afternoon, it's likely they require a modification.
But we can say that we're open to them proceeding with the submittal of a revised site plan and modifications to their land use processes. But we can't agree to it without going through it.
Absolutely.
We recommend that it be agreed.
Well, but, no, it is a separate process. We only have the ability to enforce and seek liquidated damages for breach of the contract. So we would be modifying the contract to waive or modify those liquidated damages. We have always said that they will have to go through whatever hoops the law requires. And I think you gave them very good advice to look carefully at whether or not problems with ODOT or other state permits might make that a bad idea to do it again. Now, I don't know with the other agencies. I don't think that there would be difficulty getting a revised land use approval with Albany because the land is zoned for that use. Simply scaling back the development should not, in my judgment, impact any of our criteria. And it may well be that it can be done as a modification. We have done modifications. We, Walmart changed the elevations in their design from the original application to what was actually constructed. And I, my recollection is that that was processed as a director's modification. And something like that could probably be done again. But Jeff is right. We'd make that decision when we see what exactly they are proposing. Thank you. I didn't mean to hijack the meeting, but it really helps for me to have some guidance to be doing what you want me to do.
No, I'm glad you asked. Yeah.
I did have two additional things. Thank you to Bessie for one of them. Those of you who are planning to be here Monday for Wes's evaluation may do something else. It's been postponed to September 29th. Same time, same place. And the big, wet, happy, tired dog I went home to tonight reminds me to tell you of the grand opening of the dog park on Saturday from nine to 11:00.
I just getting a lot of good use too. Yeah.
Twenty-nine.
And before, since our next meeting, we also have Art and Air Festival, our big, big event coming up.
I forgot. I met with LBCC today and I only have ATI to meet with on Friday morning. So I will, at that point, have talked with all the in-town participants and a few of the out-of-town participants for the quote LBCC situation. So.
And Rich, we had a staff meeting with some of the industry representatives today. And there was an LB representative and they wanted us to, again, extend an invitation to you. They're happy to show you the facilities. I understand there's been some scheduling. They indicated there'd been some scheduling issues.
This is LB? I was there today.
Beg your pardon. Well, you superseded me then. And probably, you were probably there after my meeting.
Probably.
But Kate, someone will be scheduling the tour component for us and the general public. A public meeting for a tour of LB and the affected industries.
You may not be able to get the public in all the areas. Some of those places are, you have to, you have to sign that you're a citizen and et cetera, et cetera. But certainly, all the members of the committee-
Hospital can get in.
Well, I don't think we can probably have public meetings in the private buildings. We can probably have a public meeting at, I mean, not from public meeting law, but we may have problems with the industries getting, since they don't know who's going to be there, we have, if it's going to be a public meeting, you're going to have to have handicapped accessibility as needed. Lynn Benton would not be a problem. And I thought that was the facility we really wanted the public to be able to see. We can certainly inquire.
Our purpose was, we wanted to see both, I'll speak for myself. I wanted to see Lynn Benton. I wanted to see the industries on what they were going to be doing, how they're going to be putting it in, you know, this proposal into their line. And because there was going to be three of us, perhaps, on that meeting, we had to have a public meeting.
Well, you don't have to have a public meeting if you're not discussing it. If you simply go and view the facilities and can avoid discussing the issues, you could do that. But why don't we see how big a problem it is before we look for ways to contain it?
Anything else, Marilyn? Any other order? Any other order business? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you both.